Five adequate notices of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, Coaster, the Star Ledger on January 2nd, 2019, and posted on the Bolton Board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. This is the council workshop session for Wednesday, June 12th at 6:00 PM. We are going to start with items for review. City manager report on issues raised at the prior council meeting. There are none. Moving forward, we're going to do special event applications by Alicia.
Good evening, mayor and council. The first application is for the Asbury Park Rose Fest, which will be held in Kennedy Park on June 24th. Second is Movies in the Park in Springwood Park in July, July 3rd, 17th, and 31st. The next two are private weddings that would be held again in Kennedy Park. A shrimp boil sponsored by Cross and Orange in Kennedy Park on August 3rd. The Back to School Book Bag Drive on August 3rd at Springwood Park. And lastly, there's a wedding on June 22nd, First Avenue Beach. Are there any questions on events? Thank you.
Moving on to item C is items to be presented by the Director of Planning, Michelle Alonzo. Michelle is out on a family emergency. She will not be in this week, so what I'm going to do is give the presentation of the proposal for 623 Main Street. It's a licensing agreement to install permanent window shutters that will approach into the public right-of-way on the sidewalk. The exterior, the proposal, which is also on the screen, is the exterior signage is requested to be replaced, nothing larger. They're going to install three Fox Windows, window display sections along Main Street, two display boxes. They're proposing internal lighting for each display box and new awnings over each window. To replace the existing storefront system indoors, white in color, and there's a color rendering, which I'll get to in a second, and skin coat and paint part of the building. This is a licensing agreement. It's not for council approval tonight or recommendation. This is just a presentation of what is being proposed. Here is the color rendering. You can see here replaces the sign. This is the elevation on the corner. There's going to be shutters supplied by Family Dollar's normal sign vendor. They're out in Ohio, I believe. Here you'll see the existing elevation where they're going to be also skin coating and repainting as proposed. And the next is where you can see they're going to replace the sign again. And here's a version of the shutters. Where's the version of the shutters? Here. So this would be for a license agreement consideration at the next council meeting. Any questions, please just ask myself. The remainder of this week, it is anticipated that Ms. Alonzo will be back in the office on Monday. Please ask her if there's any questions on this. But this is the proposal from Family Dollar. The awnings region, they go into the right-of-way, so they need governing body approval. Is there any immediate questions on this?
So they're adding windows?
No.
No.
They're fake windows.
Full windows.
Okay.
There's structural issues, so they can't put in real windows. But the awnings then would obviously approach into the right-of-way over the sidewalk.
Gotcha.
Why doesn't it have to go with planning or zoning?
Why doesn't it?
Yeah.
The initial review conducted by Ms. Alonzo stated it complied with all the requirements. So it just comes here. It's shutters, really. It complies with the zoning code.
Geez, it's an improvement on what's there now.
We went to the grand opener. We asked them that, like, why don't we put in windows? They explained why they couldn't. I'm just, like, trying to filter through my own mind, like, so if I have a building, I can just put in windows without going to planning or zoning?
Depends on the zoning district, but more often than not, on, historically, yes.
Okay.
Here, no further questions. We'll go to the review of the agenda items for tonight's meeting. Since the screen's on, I'll keep it up. There's three, there's approval of minutes for May 22nd, the executive session, work session on May 22nd, regular meeting on May 22nd. Is there any objections, any move order, questions, or comments on the minutes presented? Okay, moving forward to consent agenda items. Resolution 2019-200 is a special event application. Resolution 201 is the public health nursing services. This is an annual contract that we have, no change in costs. 202 is a resolution to credit a sewer account at 1513 Park Avenue. 203 is a duplicate tax certificate, which is only authorized by the governing body. 204 is accepting a donation of a bike for the Asbury Park Police Department. Since the donation of the bike, which has exceeded $500, any donation over that amount must be accepted by governing body resolution. Value of this bike is $2,500.
And what will that be used for?
Bike patrol.
Okay.
And the train officers on it. U Drive U Text Pay Grant is Resolution 205. This is a Chapter 159 into the budget. 206 is the annual service agreement for mobile data service coverage. These are the company that provides coverage, warranty work, out of warranty work for our radios. This has never been done by resolution, but as we monitor better the purchasing aspects, it's over the bid threshold and needs to be done by a governing body. But they've been here for years and we've had no issues with that. Resolution 207 is canceling balances of grant receivables and grants appropriated. This is approximately $300,000 of grants that the city has received in cash over the last years that we have no paperwork on. The CFO has been doing research on these, along with myself, for the last year or two. We knew that we would be canceling some of these. Over the last year or two, we haven't found any of the paperwork. We don't know what they're for, but we have the cash, so we're taking the cash and putting it into miscellaneous revenues. This is just standard routine operating procedure when there's things that we continue to clean up. 208 is authorizing T and M to prepare a Department of Transportation grant application for improvements, recommended improvements to Bond Street. This is the DOT municipal aid grant application. Normally, we wouldn't be doing this at this time of the year, but the state has upped the application process, so we must do this earlier. This has been in conjunction with myself, the Director of Transportation, the superintendent of Public Works, the Deputy Director of Public Works, and the mayor, looking at where the city can go. Our next steps in the fall, as we've caught up on a lot of paving over the last three, four years, is the Department of Public Works will be doing an inventory or ranking and rating of all the streets in the fall, so we can get a better idea of what the next phases of street repairs have to be. They did this about two and a half years ago, but most of those roads have been finished, whether it's in the infrastructure component report for ISAR or for the city. We need to do this again. We're going to be on a cycle of doing it every two or three years. Steel Lake Drive, for example, was on that list and that's getting repaid. So you'll have that information probably in the fall. And Resolution 228 is appointing me the clerk pro tempore. As the city clerk is out sick, I'll be acting as the clerk for these meetings and will sit up at the dais for the 7 o'clock meeting. Is there any questions on the consent agenda resolutions?
That resolution council's already taken action on.
Yes.
Earlier this evening, before you went into executive session, council voted to approve Resolution 2019-228 authorizing Michael Capabianco to serve as clerk pro tempore for this evening's meeting due to the fact that city's.
Moving.
So you're gonna sit up there?
Someone has to watch the clock?
Not me. Somebody does need to watch the clock.
I don't have it turned on yet, so I'm trying to go through this, so I have a half hour to figure it out.
That's the most important job at this meeting, Michael.
She means in no way to restrict public comment. Moving on to individual resolutions. 209 is approval of bills. Resolution 210 is waiving the fees as per the abandoned vacant property code. This gentleman has been before the zoning board and he fits within the requirements, so his fees are now waived for the abandoned property code. This is the second one that we've had.
What makes somebody eligible to have their fees waived?
They need to be doing something, an affirmative step. He's at the zoning board. So the zoning board took almost four months to hear him last year, so he was actually hoping to have the project done, but it carried over into January when he got his approval. You need to have an affirmative action, such as going before planning or zoning or have the application submitted. You need to have a building permit. You need to do something that shows you're trying to make the property not be abandoned anymore. Most of them have been compliance because of getting building permits.
This is Spagola House.
Oh.
Yes.
And the gentleman who's done it has done numerous projects within the city.
Yes. Yeah, but zoning doesn't like what they're doing with this.
Yeah, zoning.
Zoning approved in January. Resolution 211 is approving the 2019, 2019, 2020 liquor license renewals. Staff is recommending removing license 1303-33-017-12, which is the alehouse, from this resolution. So there'll have to be a motion to amend the resolution at the regular council meeting.
At appropriate time. And then that one can be considered separately before the expiration of the current license, which is the end of this month. You have another meeting, and that one will be deferred to the next council meeting.
There will be a resolution. 2012 is for liquor license with special conditions for Porta. Myself, the mayor, and Councilman Chapman, and representatives from the police department met with them discussing noise. The recommendation will be, and the formal language will be read at the meeting, will be if there is a credible or legitimate noise complaint, that the door should be immediately shut. So that will have formal language read for an amendment in.
And who's determining what's credible? What's a credible?
The processes will be outlined in the resolution will be, the shift commander will be instructed, there'll be a standing order from Chief Kelso, who's here still, to, the shift commander must go out and inspect it, and then they'll walk the area to make sure that it's a legitimate noise complaint.
And timeframe-wise, how quickly can that happen from the time I call? So hypothetically, I'm calling to complain about Porta. And how quickly can, realistically, can a shift commander get out to do that?
There's always a road supervisor on the grill, so within a minute.
It just depends on if, you know, if there's a fire or another emergency, but yes, there will be someone immediate. 2013 is approving a liquor license with special conditions for Johnny Mac. 2014 is Bond Street Bar and Grill. 2015 is the Asbury Hotel. There is no additional resolution, no additional conditions on these liquor licenses. They're just listed separately because there's been conditions in the past.
And we're carrying over the same conditions from the past?
Same conditions. There is no change. Resolution 2016 is authorizing the purchase of a new fire truck for the fire department. Kevin, do you want to explain the need and what you're?
We hope to purchase a Seagrave pumper with equipment, and it's replacing one of the, one of the pumper trucks that we bought 13 years ago under the Urban Enterprise Zone funding.
And what was that truck, when you purchased it? Was it demoed?
No, those were, we bought three new ones in 2006.
And what's their useful life?
They'd recommend a replacement after 10 years.
No further questions. Resolution 2017.
What's the estimated delivery date?
If we, if this gets passed tonight, we hope to get it delivered by December, I believe. I could get a concrete answer for you on that, but I believe it's December.
December through February. One of the issues that's actually happened with these large-scale purchases is steel tariffs. So the tariffs have actually increased the cost of some of these prices. We've been hearing this across motor vehicles and fleet. This has been a discussion actually in the Managers Association. So one of the things is we definitely want to lock in prices before we see increased steel tariffs and those costs go up. This has been an issue that we've seen in New Jersey here. Moving to 2017.
This is coming out of capital?
There was a capital ordinance approved by the council earlier this year for $1 million for fire department trucks.
Right, but wasn't there a discussion that we also need a new till or whatever you want to call it?
Yes.
So what happened to that?
That is, we found a used one that a municipality in New York will be publicly auctioning in the next six to eight weeks. So at the next council meeting, we're going to request authorization for myself or the fire chief to publicly bid on it. New York is a little different than New Jersey. New York rules don't allow for sale of government between states. We can do that here. So it actually has to be publicly bid, but we anticipate it'll fit within the budget that has been appropriated by the governing body from the capital ordinance. Is that answered?
How old is, I mean, you say it's used. It seems like we got burnt before buying used equipment. Are we going to get burned again?
I don't believe so. This vehicle is about 15 years old. I can get you the exact numbers. I don't have that in front of me right now.
But 15?
It's approximately 15 years old.
But you just said the length of a pumper's tent.
No, this is an aerial apparatus.
Right.
So we're going for something as opposed to a cost of about 1.2 million, something for a lot less money. But we can have a further discussion once I have all the facts in front of me.
Okay.
We're not presenting this tonight.
No, I know that. I know, we talked about capital, and we were looking at two fire trucks, and I said, well, there's not enough money, so I didn't know where we were going. And I even said, well, if we need both of them, then scrap something else out of capital. Not another fire truck, but something, be it IT equipment, be something, but you're not going to be making up.
$900,000.
$900,000 with IT equipment, but, okay, well, give us the details. And one day, Kevin, no hurry, can you just give us a list of all the apparatus you have?
Yeah.
We have insurance. We have, I can say you need insurance law.
Make me a hard copy.
I will send for you a hard insurance.
I have that. You'll have that tomorrow.
No, no, thank you.
2017 is authorizing various IT equipment. 2018 is authorizing the purchase of three police cars. This has been the fourth year. We're in the improvement program of the police vehicles. These are for SUVs. With three shifts, these cars are running 12 to 14 hours a day and break down. We're almost, I would say about two years away from having almost a complete fleet that is fixable. The police cars obviously get beat up and dinged up through time, and you don't want to run them 12, 14 hours a day with the three shifts that we have. So this is, again, we've done this in 16, 17, 18, and now in 19, trying to maintain the fleet that is operating 24 hours a day. 2019 is ATV for the beach department, which will be paid out of menu items. 2019-2020 is authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to enter into a contract for the purchase of real property at 929 Asbury Avenue, which is block 403, lot 11, for the location of a new firehouse and associated facilities. An environmental review has been done by French and Perillo. The property is currently under an LSRP by the current owner. The property is clean as it can be. The, our LSRP was very happy with the condition of the site, and this is the first step in hopefully relocating the fire department. As previously been discussed, once the new fire department actually gets built, hopefully gets built, the city will then auction off the city's existing fire department on the 800 block of Main Street. And we also have a grant that we're waiting for funds to do hazard mitigation cleanup around that site, which will just make it more valuable. So there's a couple moving parts in this. This will be the first step in entering into a contract. Right now, we're still in the final negotiations of the language, but, you know, time is of the essence because this is, this property fell into our laps, as you know. 2021 is authorizing the city to grant a license for encroachment at 1,008, 1,012, Springwood Avenue. This has been before the council before. Resolution 222 is award of a micro mobility program. We'll skip over that until the end of this, so Mr. Manzella can brief everyone on what's going on with that. 223 is awarding of transportation of liquid sludge from the Asbury Park Treatment Plant. This goes out to bid every few years. The price is a little higher, it's a couple cents higher a gallon, but it's a public bid and we need to be able to transfer the sludge from the sewer plant. 224 is awarding a contract for Millennium Communications Group for various projects around City Hall. This is for additional security cameras throughout the city, throughout our municipal building. They've been, Millennium has been doing all our camera work for the last few years before I even started and did the camera work within the school and for the police department as the external ones. 220, I'm sorry, change order number four is Resolution 225. There is $0 on that. Resolution 226 is rejecting the bids for the Opticon or equivalent GPS preemption and activated traffic system. The bids are being rejected because the lone bidder actually did include the required ethics statement, which was mandatory and has to be rebid. This is for the Opticon Preemption System for the fire department, along with Main Street and Asbury Avenue for traffic light coordination. And Resolution 227 is a person-to-person place-to-place transfer for license number 1303-33-008-010 for 1101 Ocean Avenue. Is there any questions on those resolutions before I ask Mr. Manzella to come forward?
I have a question on 221. That was before us at another council meeting, correct?
It was an easement, and now it's been changed to a license.
Actually, just.
Or is that being tabled again?
If I could correct that. This one has to do with the screening adjacent to.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is the Michaels Group.
The Michaels Group.
Yes, I'm sorry.
So this is not one that came before council agreement?
I'm sorry, I confused this one. This is for the Michaels Group project.
I did too. I made a note. I think this was before us.
This is the Michaels Group project. The planning board requested that the utility infrastructure be caged in, and one of the cages is on the right-of-way where they can only place it. Mont Silvent, thank you.
Okay.
And it is a license agreement.
Perfect. Thank you.
And Jen Dawson will be here later if there's any questions for her. If she's not here, I'll be.
Okay. Resolution 2019-222 is recommending the award of a micro mobility system program to Zaxter and their partner, SPIN. The plan is that Zaxter will continue to operate the bike share, same as it is, has been going successfully for two years. No change on that. And then they will have the ability to add scooters with their partner, SPIN. We are alternating this as a six-month pilot to really evaluate how it goes, the safety, the use of it. It's no cost to the city. Riders will be informed, both on the app and through signs that we're going to be installing, that scooters need to be ridden on the street, on the sidewalks. We're actually working on, we just today received some signs that say, no riding of bikes, scooters, or skateboards on sidewalks. And we're going to start with the busier streets like Cookman and Springwood and then look at other streets that were a lot of reckless activity. We plan to locate stations all over the city. One of the big benefits about scooters is because they are more economically feasible, you can reach a lot more areas easier. So our plan is to really spread out where the scooters are positioned every morning, all over the city. And we are going to be creating virtual stations, which basically means painting on the sidewalk a scooter parking area with a stencil. And in the app, there'll be geo-fenced, so that someone, in order to end their ride, they would have to go back and put the scooter in that exact location. They also will have to take a photo at the end of the ride of the scooter, and that is just insurance that they parked appropriately and they can end their ride. Zaxter says they can launch within six weeks inside the agreement, so we can sign the agreement tomorrow. We're hoping that by July 15th, the latest, they'll be out there. They're going to start with a smaller number of scooters, probably somewhere between 20 and 50. Scale up to maybe about 150 within 30 days, and they are capped out at 250, which they don't expect that happening until end of the summer or see if they're down. And it's all dependent upon demand. Demand is there, fine. If not, they won't go. They have 24/7 customer service. We can, we have the ability as a city to regulate speeds on any street or overall. We are also going to be implementing a no-go zone on the boardwalk, which means that it's geo-fenced, so as soon as someone gets close to getting up onto the boardwalk, it'll slow down to zero and turn off, so they won't actually be able to ride on the boardwalk. We are also, both us and Zaxter have agreed, to end all scooter operations at 9:00 PM. That'll be true of the whole pilot. We'll evaluate it afterwards to see if we want to make any changes, but at 9:00 PM, basically what happens, the operation, how it works, is Zaxter will come and literally pick up all the scooters at 9:00 PM, charge them overnight in a maintenance facility, clean them up, and then put them back out at 7:00 in the morning.
Michael, do they have lights on them?
They do have lights. Right for you. In 2019, Zaxter is not proposing any revenue share because it is a pilot and they want to understand what the ridership is going to be and what's there, and they are absolutely committed to sharing revenue if it's successful in 2010. We've already talked about some numbers on a per-ride basis instead of getting revenue for this. And Zaxter and SPIN will be hiring a local team to maintain the system. They're anticipating that it could be up to 10 local jobs for, that are managed by their full-time operations team to do, to manage the scooter system, basically. The cost is going to be $1 plus 15 cents a minute, so on average, a 10-minute ride, which is probably a large majority of the rides that will happen in Asbury, it'll be 250, which is pretty cheap. And it's only for those aged enough, so hopefully that will.
Any requirement for helmets?
No requirement for helmets, not, there's no state requirement for helmets for bikes or scooters. I think Zaxter is willing to work with us to provide some helmets if we so desire in a central location.
And people can ride these scooters in the bike lanes?
They can ride in the bike lanes, they can ride on the street. One of the things we're doing, so on Cookman and Springwood, we're the two streets where I talked about, first putting the signs, the no sidewalk riding signs. We've already put charros in the street, so any street that we do that, we want to make sure that bike facilities are there, so people are aware that that's where they should be riding before we start really forcing the no sidewalk riding.
Okay, many questions. We've already discussed quite a few. Let's go back to the bicycle. Didn't we lose, like, three sponsors this year?
Two sponsors, four stations.
So what's happened? Do we have the same amount of bikes, or did they?
We are, so that, our two-year, our first two-year contract with Zaxter is actually up at the end of August. So at that, while starting now, we're going to talk about what we do going forward. We're going to do another push for sponsorships. We're going to look at other options for funding this. That number could go down, it could go up. It depends on sponsors and what the city is willing to.
So last year.
Yeah.
We made money with bicycles.
Now, we pretty much broke even because we lost those sponsorships. So the sponsors were paying for the system, and then we were getting the user revenue. We really didn't generate enough revenue to cover what we lost in terms of sponsorships. So it's kind of a wash.
And this year is going to be a loss?
2018 to 19, it's probably a loss.
That we're going to have to make up?
We already have, yeah.
How much?
Like, 20,000?
20,000?
Yeah.
We paid Zaxter 20,000.
Correct. We had a two-year contract with them to provide eight bike share stations, and when those sponsors backed out, we had to make up their fees. So.
And the sponsors were 7,000 each, so if we could.
9,000.
Oh, 9,000. Okay, my fault. I was going to say for 7,000 each, we could have paid 21 and kept on making money. We lost three sponsors. I thought there was.
We lost two.
We lost two, so we lost $18,000.
Well, those two sponsors had four stations. They each sponsor four stations. I mean, the way we see it, it's a service, right?
How many, okay, how many stations did we have last year?
Eight.
How many are we going to have this year?
Well, this year ends the end of August.
Okay, so how many do we have now?
Right now, eight.
Eight, okay. And then end of August?
Four of them are paid for by sponsors essentially.
End of August, we'll have four?
That's up to all of us to decide.
The 9:00 PM shut-off, there's no magic button they can do, just like it gets close to the boardwalk, it shuts down? They can't pull a plug? Because you tell me if they have 250 at 10 different stations, by the time they pick up the 10th station, it's going to be midnight. So how?
Oh, yeah, but after 9:00 PM, you won't be able to.
Turn it on.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
They have a shut-off?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
It's within the app. It'll just say scooter not available. You won't be able to, it's locked. You won't be able to do it.
Okay, good, okay. That's what I was hoping.
And just along those lines, not only is there a shut-off, but there is a decrease in speed. So for example, if we, if you're driving down Forest, you could go 12 miles per hour.
Do you have the thing in front of you?
The-
That you tell us?
No.
Page one seventy-eight. Oh, okay, you don't have it. Our proposed fleet size includes operating exist in forty-five bikes, so that's why we have forty-five bikes?
Yeah.
Okay, and up to two hundred and fifty scooters?
Right.
But you say they're going to start off at twenty-five fifty and build up eventually?
Yeah. They think by, you know, within thirty days, they'll take it one fifty and then maybe by, like, see if you're down, they'll be up to two fifty. If the demand is there, yeah. If it's not there, I'm not going to put scooters.
Okay. Hold on. This is on page one eighty-seven. Cash payments. Eligible low-income residents can use cash to purchase a spending Zaxter access card at partner locations. Where are these locations?
We have the chart yet, but we're, that's assuming we pass the resolution tonight, that's the first thing we work on.
Why do you have to be low-income? Why can't I, you know, I can't do an app? Can I go buy a card?
Hold on, I think we probably do it, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so there's two hundred and fifty of them, and I imagine there's not going to be more than ten at a location? And I'm just guessing?
Yeah, it's going to depend on, so they're going to, they're going to put them out in the morning and-
Yeah, but, okay, where are they going to put them out? How many parking spots are we going to lose? How many like-
No, they're, all the, all the areas are proposed to be off-street.
Describe off-street to me. I mean, do you have these ten spots on a map someplace?
I have a map. It's more than ten. We are looking to put them in furniture zones, meaning like the space between the sidewalk and the curb. One example of the space, we also want to co-locate them next to the bike share. So one example of the space is Press Plaza, where there's those skaters. You've got two sides, one side has the bike share, the other side we want to put scooters.
Just back to the low-income cash purchase, you know, that's for people who don't have a smartphone. So you can do it all through your smartphone.
How about people that can't use a smartphone or don't have a smartphone?
Okay.
I mean, I just want to know where you can go buy the thing, because-
I just can't.
Okay, yeah. And there's going to be one, people can go buy?
Go buy.
Is it twenty-five-dollar card? One of my twenty-five-dollar runs up? I don't ride it. Okay, good. I like that. It's easier than me saying, figure out how to rent me a bicycle. Well, it makes your life easier. On page two oh four, we're going to hold educational workshops. When's that going to happen?
Again, once we get them under contractual schedule. I anticipate that we'll do one before we launch, at least one or two.
Okay.
And then as many as we need.
We talked about this, and I asked Fred, and I think Michael was going to reach out to Ezio and to Neiman. A million dollars liability is not a lot of money, especially when you got people riding these scooters, sometimes drunk with no helmets. I mean, we asked for a million dollars for like a street closing. I don't think a million-dollar liability is enough for an operation like this. I don't know what other towns have, but, you know, they say, don't worry, you can't be sued. Everything's in Zaxter's name. Come on, you know damn well, everybody sues everybody, and they're going to sue the city of Asbury Park because we okayed the contract.
Yeah.
Do what? So this was, this was at the bid where Ezio did review. He reviews all our bids for our insurance side of it. He said he's never really seen anything like this, and if that's the industry standard, go with the industry standard. And that's what's in the city ordinance, so it's a million dollars of general liability, workers' comp. It just mirrors what we have in our existing code.
Industry standards could be, what is San Francisco, what is Hoboken? I mean, what are other towns? What are their liability policies?
I think Hoboken has the same value for their pilot.
Something I'd like to note before, I mean, a million dollars, I mean, like you say, we get that for a street closing, not for somebody riding a scooter that can, but they're exclusive, exclusiveness, where they can take any pictures of Asbury Park and use them for advertisement all over the world, and we don't get a penny. So we don't get a penny for the service, and we don't get a penny for the advertise, oh, look at all these beautiful scooters in Asbury Park. It's in their contract.
It's something we could-
What would you want the penny?
I think that-
I'm not, I'm not understanding.
It's a picture in the public domain.
I'm not saying-
Right, it's like, right.
It's like, city of Asbury Park, give me some money.
I'm not, I'm not saying maybe we should or shouldn't, but my main, only contention with this is like, they're giving us no money.
For the pilot.
For the pilot.
Yeah.
And-
It's a one-year contract, so.
But you said six months.
Well, a six-month pilot, but it's signed every year. So it's a, it's a one-year contract, but in actuality, they're not going to have a lot of scooters out over the winter. I mean, the evaluation period is-
It's just essentially summer.
Summer.
Summer, summer, fall, yeah.
Why? And here it reads they'll be used year-round.
What's, what's that, the bikes?
No, with the scooters, they say twelve months a year.
I think it depends on where you live.
Yeah.
The proposal for Asbury Park says it'll be twelve months a year. If there's snow, they'll pick them up like the bicycles.
Yes.
So it is a year contract, it's not six months.
It's a six-month evaluation with it. What we see with the bikes is very, very low ridership in December, January.
No, I agree.
Yeah. Very, very low.
Page, page two twenty, it says service area. City limits is defined by, defined by both parties. Why do we care if they're driven outside of Asbury Park? We let the bicycles be driven outside of Asbury Park?
I think we're a little more sensitive about the scooters, just because of the perception. I think we could talk about that with Zaxter, whether we actually limit the city limits or if we allow those trips to go beyond.
When they, everybody submitted proposals, a company that did get the proposal, I have no problem, they said it would create fifteen to twenty local jobs, and the company we're giving it to says, buh 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 buh, we will explore. So-
Well, they definitely, they committed to having a local team of ten.
Having what?
A local team of ten.
A local team that lives in Boston or a local team that lives in Asbury?
They've committed-
I don't see that in the contract.
It's not in the contract, but they've committed to giving priority to local residents.
My friend committed to me that that horse was going to win, win the race the other day, and it didn't win. And so if we have all this other language in the contract, why not put that in the contract? That they would hire, I mean, the one company said fifteen to twenty-five local jobs, and their answer is, we'll explore.
Well, and again, fifteen to twenty-five local jobs doesn't mean that-
I'm not saying they're full-time.
All twenty are going to be living in Asbury Park either, though. Right?
Well, we encourage to hire locally.
Yeah, of course. And that's, that's what we're going to do with Zaxter.
Okay. State law says you can ride these on the sidewalks.
No.
Yes. State law says you can ride these on the sidewalks unless a municipality says no. So would we have to adopt an ordinance saying you can't-
We, we did already.
When did we adopt an ordinance saying you can't ride scooters on the sidewalks?
We did bicycles.
But we didn't do scooters.
I'll, I'll check the state law again, but I mean-
Hoboken became one of the first municipalities in New Jersey to allow electric scooters. When the council passed an ordinance in April to start a six-month pilot, electric scooters will not be permitted on sidewalks. The state law was passed by Murphy that gives them the right to be ridden on sidewalks unless the municipality says no. So I think we're going to have to pass an ordinance. Fred, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, we'll have to check on the language.
We'll check on the language, yeah.
But you may be correct with that.
I have to run out, but you and I talked about doing an FAQ.
Yes.
So that we would put like some of the things that you mentioned, that we can limit how fast it goes, you know, how many people we've kept off the street via a car, via our bikes, and what we're hoping to keep people out of cars. So I would love to work on that with you, and I will be back in like fifteen minutes.
I think my main concern still, I told you from day one, is like, you know, years ago when we were broken, Asbury Park was like, mm, Asbury Park, we needed stuff like this, and we gave stuff like this for free. We're no longer broken, we don't need stuff like this for free. I don't understand why we're not getting a percentage of the revenue. I mean, it's got to be worth something to us.
Well, it's also an emerging market.
Right.
So why should we take the risk if they don't take any risk? If they think it's that great, they, I mean, it's got to be worth something to them. I mean, why, again, why are we going back to the, I'm going to say, the old mentality? We have nothing. So just let's do it for six months, let them reap all the money. Now we're losing money on the bicycles. Now we're getting no money for the scooters. Scooters have been successful in some cities and unsuccessful in other cities. I'd like the, I love the part that you just can't drop them anywhere, and there's going to be corrals.
Right.
Without that, you know, I think all fibers will, I mean, unless we're getting some type of revenue from this, I just can't focus on it. And then all the other concerns I have, and I think the insurance is way too cheap and just for them to say, for you to say, well, we don't want to ride them out of town because of the liability makes you think even more, that it should be more than a million dollars. Okay, thank you.
Understood.
Any other questions?
I do. Michael, is this, the city is getting no money from these? Is this just through the pilot program?
Yes.
Will it change once we actually enter into an agreement?
It absolutely can change.
Okay.
With the next agreement. In fact, they've, they've committed that if it's successful, they absolutely will share revenue with us.
Okay.
Did they say how much they're going to share?
We've talked about some numbers, per-ride numbers. I think it's, I think in a way, having the pilot makes us a little smarter too, because we'll know how many rides and how much they're making, and we can demand that much more in the negotiation.
And we're not committed to entering a contract if it doesn't work out on hours, correct?
No, it's, it's a yearly thing.
It's a year pilot?
One year.
So, yeah, so it's not six months, it's a one-year pilot.
One-year pilot.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Next.
Moving on to ordinances for introduction tonight. There's an airspace ordinance for introduction.
This is the one that the council has seen previously, and it deals with the Santander Bank just across the street here from City Hall. The request was for an easement to cover a sixty-five-square-foot area immediately above the entrance to the bank for them to install a canopy. And some concerns have been raised in the past about granting an easement and whether they would consider switching to a license agreement, which is something that's provable at the will of the city. They would be paying fair market value, according to the assessor, the value was over five hundred dollars, something in that ballpark, for the easement. But we went back to them after hearing council's concern about easement versus license agreement. I proposed the license agreement. They got back to us and said they were reviewing that with the client. The last meeting, they asked us to table it. I reached out to them again, I didn't hear back from them, so I would suggest that you table it one more time.
Ordinance twenty nineteen dash twenty-four is amending chapter five, the beach boardwalk and beachfront regulations of the city of Asbury Park. This is the compliant state law. The, there was a change in the smoking policy, this changes this to mirror the state law. The public hearing for this meeting, for this ordinance will be July tenth. Twenty nineteen dash twenty-five is an ordinance authorizing the city of Asbury Park to acquire the real property located at nine twenty-nine Asbury Avenue. This, again, is for the, the proposed firehouse.
And the prior resolution that Michael referenced, it's earlier on on the agenda, would authorize the city to enter into the contract, but under the local lands and buildings law, in order for you to actually acquire a parcel of real property, an ordinance is necessary. So that's why we have both a resolution and an ordinance on the agenda.
And this public hearing will be on for June twenty-sixth. There is one ordinance for second reading tonight, it's twenty nineteen dash twenty-three, plastic bags. There will be an amendment to the ordinance on the floor, from my understanding. Do you want to describe it?
Yes. One of the exemptions that some of the other towns has in their plastic bag ban ordinance is with regard to small bags that are utilized for screws and bolts and other type materials like that that are provided by hardware stores. That was not originally made an exemption in the ordinance that was before the council. Mayor contacted us about some concerns that were raised by committee about not having that in there as an exemption, and the recommendation from staff and the work committee that put this ordinance together was to consider including that as an exemption. So those types of plastic bags would be allowable, essentially. And because it makes the ordinance less restrictive as opposed to more restrictive, we don't view that as a revision that substantially alters the substance of the ordinance such that you could amend the ordinance this evening before you open it up for a public hearing, and then adopt the ordinance as amended if you so choose.
Next.
Is there any questions? Is that a German?
No, we have, any what?
Any questions about anything that was just gone over?
No. No, it's comments by-
Public comment?
No, the city council.
City council.
By city council.
Okay. Want to start with any, sure. So the city has created a parking guide. That's now available online and also in the businesses downtown. Thank you, Michael. I also wanted to let everyone know that the Springwood Music Monday concerts begin on June twenty-fourth. The Asbury Live concerts on the boardwalk begin on June twenty-sixth, and the Asbury Park Concert Band concerts start on June twenty-seventh. Also, the New Jersey Tourism has created an Anthony Bourdain food trail based on his New Jersey episodes. So there'll be several places throughout New Jersey where they will go, places that have been on this TV show, and it begins tomorrow at Frank's Deli at two-thirty. That's it. Oh, no, one more thing, sorry. On Monday night, I attended the council meeting in Neptune Township with Dani Fiore from Dani Bee's. Dani had asked the council to consider no longer locking the gates that are over the footbridges, on the footbridges over Wesley Lake. She had gone to the June tenth meeting, and they asked her to come back. They said they wanted to discuss it. So I went with her, and there seemed to be some confusion as to who owns the gates, who owns the bridges, and who maintains all of that. So I've reached out to Dr. Brantley, who's on the council, and to Mayor Rizzo to ask for a meeting to discuss the footbridges, the gates, and the concerns of citizens who do not want to see those gates locked. I asked to meet with John Moore and myself. I was told by Dr. Brantley that he didn't really have the time for it in the next couple weeks. So we will be attending the next Neptune Township meeting again. If anybody's interested, please join us, and we'd like to see that these gates no longer are locked, that, you know, it's wrong, and it, and it may actually be illegal to impede foot traffic in these areas. So it's something that we're concerned about.
On Monday, June seventeenth, at the Salvation Army between the hours of nine and two, is Utilities Assistance Day. So for residents who need assistance paying their bills, Central Jersey, Jersey Central Power and Light, New Jersey National Gas, they will be there, and you need to bring ID, proof of income, social security cards, and your most recent gas and electric bills. Again, that's going to be on Monday, June seventeenth, at the Salvation Army, six oh So for residents who need assistance paying their bills, Central Jersey, Central Power and Light, New Jersey National Gas, they will be there, and you need to bring ID, proof of income, social security cards, and your most recent gas and electric bills. Again, that's gonna be on Monday, June 17th, at Salvation Army, 605 Asbury Avenue between the hours of 9:00 and 2:00. And also, I want to announce that the Asbury Park African-American Musical Heritage Project is having a launch party at the Danny Lynch Transparent Gallery Friday, June 21st, 2019, and all are invited.
I have nothing at this time. First of all, Eileen, thank you and Danny for going to Neptune. I wish I'd known about it, I would've gone with you. The only confusion is, we've been asking Neptune for 10 years, and they just keep on making up stories. So, and the stories they made up the other night were very, it was like Abbott and Costello, like, who's on first? I mean, well, we don't know who owns it, but we don't know this. Well, you know who locked it down. Your police department, so tell them not to lock it down. So, I mean, it wasn't that hard of a question, and they couldn't field an answer is kinda disheartening. And, believe me, I have the utmost respect for the entire Neptune Council, but, I mean, this has been a decade we've been asking, so the sooner the meeting, the better off. As much as Dr. Brantley's too busy, right, reach out to Mayor Rizzo, and I'll meet, and if not, I'll go to that next meeting with you. I appreciate that very much, and tell Danny, thank you. Tomorrow, at the VNA on Main and Fifth, it's Community Day from 9:00 to 2:00. There's food, music, fun giveaways, and there's free testing. So it's a great event. It's tomorrow. Hopefully, everybody can attend it and check their health. On last Friday, June 7th, I had the honor to go to the yearly 200 Club Vower Awards Luncheon, and quite a few Asbury Park Police Officers were recognized. I'm just gonna read their names and tell you what awards they won. So the Certificate of Recognition went to Officer Samuel Griffith, Special Officer Lorenzo Pepway Jr., Police Officer Ryan Leahy, Police Officer Steven Martinson, Special Officer John Sarno. The Commendation Awards went to Asbury Park Firefighter Carney Conklin, Asbury Park Police Department Detective Joe Leon. The Merit Award, Asbury Park Street Crime Unit Sergeant Lorenzo Pepway, Asbury Park Department Street Crime Unit Police Officer Jovan Britt, Asbury Park Police Department Special Officer John Sarno, Asbury Park Police Department Police Officer Anthony Ferrantino. The highest award that can be given by this club is the Vower Award. Asbury Park Police Officer Timothy Griswold, Asbury Park Police Officers, Special Officer John Sarlo, Asbury Park Police Department Street Crime Unit Officer Daniel Savistano, and Asbury Park Police Department Street Crime Unit Sergeant Alistair Sweeney. Asbury's Police and Fire Department were probably the most recognized in the county, and I thank Asbury Park's finest for doing a great job. Chiefs and chiefs, thank you, and thank your men. That's all I have. Matters from the City Manager?
Matters from the City Manager, I have none at this time. I have the City Attorney.
And none at this time.
Do you wanna take a five-minute break?
Nope. Gavel right there.
Counselor Clayton?
Here.
Counselor Kendall?
Present.
Counselor Moore?
Here.
Sorry, you got the moated, Mayor Moore?
Here.
All please rise for a silent moment, silent prayer moment of reflection.
Flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in one nation, under God, in equal liberty and justice.
As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, the Star Ledger, on January 2nd, 2019, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We're going to begin the public presentation. Please, you have three minutes to speak. State your name and address.
Do we need a motion?
Do we need the motion to go into public participation?
Move it.
Second.
Hold those in favor.
Aye.
The timer will be on the wall. We're gonna try it since I'm sitting here.
Who's the clerk?
I am.
Oh, you're the clerk. A lot of titles. So we're starting?
Yes.
Oh, my God, my time is running out.
You give four seconds.
This is very confusing. Let's talk about the Asbury Park High School this Sunday, an event that was sanctioned and an application was made. I was there. There were police, firemen, teachers, a lot of people from Asbury. Liquor, beer, cigarettes were flowing everywhere. So I already took it up with the superintendent in the state, and I'm gonna file some complaints. Police chief was there, fire chief was there. They were offering me drinks. You know I don't drink, right?
Now I do.
Okay, I don't drink, Mayor. And I don't smoke, but isn't it funny? I have to get sick from all this smoke in Asbury. I can't walk anywhere without cigars and cigarette smoke and pot smoke. Is that fair for me?
Don't waste your three minutes.
I'm aware of my time. Okay. That's a big one, that Asbury Park High School. So I'll let you know about the complaint number. Smoking. They ran an article today from the government of New Jersey, the rules about smoking. No boardwalk, no beach, no public places. The city is out of control with smoking. Cigars, cigarettes, Tipperillos, Whipporillos, vapes, pops, beeps, bulbs, everywhere. You can't walk anywhere without a cloud engulfing you. You get dizzy. I don't know what's in that smoke. I don't like getting dizzy. Excuse me? I heard, I don't know if I told you about some of the people that were here on the weekends? They're running around with sexual object hats on and taking people's parking spaces. And then when the citizens complain, the police say, "Oh, you know, we can't do anything about it." People with penis hats, vagina hats. What are we doing here? What is, what is wrong with this city? It should sink like Atlantis. Come back anew. That was a good joke, right, Mayor?
I don't remember Atlantis coming back.
What?
I don't remember Atlantis coming back. I'm glad, I'm glad I'm using a party three days.
If Asbury stays down there, I'll go to Avon or someplace else. Crime is still out of control with the second most dangerous place in New Jersey of 565. Garden State or the city erected a permanent illegal sign on the JCPL pole again at the 1100 block in front of Garden State. It's, now it's screwed in, and there's no permits, and the city manager knows all about this. I'm going along.
Have a good drive.
Yes.
Hi, my name's Arthur Schlossback. I live on Summerfield Avenue. Couple things. One, back in the 70s, when Ocean Grove was locked down on weekends, midnight on Saturday till midnight on Monday morning, my family, who own real estate offices in Asbury, Bradley Beach, and Delmar, with the Asbury Park Press, took the township of Neptun, Asbury Park, and the Camp Meeting Association of Ocean Grove, which is like a mini city council inside of Neptune. But they were the main, maimed on the suit, were them for doing it. And I believe if you call them up and just ask them, "For what time do you lock up the bridge on Saturday night?", they tell you. And I'm sure they're the ones that tell the cops. I don't think the Neptune City Council cares about it, but it's definitely the Camp Meeting Association. Two, the bag, plastic bag thing, when did that come up for a vote?
This evening.
Oh, this evening?
And there will be a, there will be a public hearing later this evening on that ordinance.
Yeah, I see some problems. Then I'll think you'll far enough. And three, just sort of help it, why are we getting rid of the Asbury Firehouse? It's such a lovely Lampard building. I feel like you guys, there's not gonna be anything left in this town. There's very little left anyway, paramount. That's it. And I built it. And I would just fix it up. That's all I can say.
Art, just the reason why, it's beyond the point of fixing it up.
Well, that's fine.
If you remember 10 years ago, when it was condemned by Ocean, we had to put trailers in the street for the firefighters to sleep in.
The guy I worked for, Ray Kinnaman, for years, was knocking everything down.
It, it, it can't be, it can't be fixed.
Okay, thank you, it's gonna be fixed.
Yep, okay.
But it can't be a developer coming in, take a company, think, looks the same. Might not even work as a firehouse.
Tracy Rogers, Soul Avenue.
If I can get, to see if there's any more urban enterprise zone money, does that ever return back to the state, or do we still have any of that on hand? Also, the police cameras, Millennium with the city, you know, I know, three years ago, how far are we to correcting those past problems that we had, where there were streets that had cameras on it and the wiring was messed up? How much have we finished, or how much more do we need? And are we working with the schools on their cameras and the interaction? Also, the appraisal that they were doing for, on the boardwalk, for, for the condos, have that, still hasn't come in? Still hasn't come in. Also, with, with scooters, this is a story. I took the wife and the kids to Miami Beach, and we went down, and they had scooters, and, you know, some people I knew were in hotels, they were telling us about it, so I rented one for my son. Being a bad parent, I'm gonna take responsibility, but, you know, I gave him at 15 a scooter and, and didn't even think about him being all over Miami Beach. My, my mother calls me, and she says, "Where you at?" I said, "Miami Beach. Where the kids? My daughter's here." At a park, beach party, wild beach party. "And where's Jovan?" "Well, he's just riding over." I rented him a scooter. So we need to make sure we have some language in there that makes parents or anybody giving out these vehicles, scooters, you know, this was the mobile riding one. But we make sure that people know that we will go after parents for not watching their kids and making sure all that's taken care of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no current UEZ funds. There's no money left. I'm currently auditing six years of records to see what could or should come back to the city. We found at least one lien that was placed on a property that was never repaid to us. So I'm actually, it's six filing cabinets worth of documents going through every one, bit by bit, over the last year, trying to find out what has actually been owed to us over the course of time. But right now, there is zero UEZ dollars in the city.
Did we go, did we send any back to the state?
No. No, there's, everything was used.
When that, you know?
No, there was no money. We've hadn't had, bless you, we haven't had money from UEZ in years. When the state tried to collect it, we didn't have any, and the state right now is doing a study with Thomas Edison to see what the next phase of UEZ should be. I'm actually speaking with them tomorrow. So we don't have any money. The police cameras, I don't know if there was any issues with Millennium before I started, but I can tell you, since then, there's been nothing. They're a very, very good firm. The cameras are tied into the school. The Housing Authority is not, but we've been trying to work with the Housing Authority to get it to us. We use a software, hardware program called Genetek, and we'd ask anybody who's ever going to put a security system into their building, whether it's residential or commercial, to use a Genetek software or one that's compatible with it, because the police department has had issues in the past where it's not compatible with any viewers that we have. Because some of the systems might be proprietary, they'll give us a video, we can't view it. So anything that is compatible with the Genetek software, which is more open source, would be beneficial for the city, because when a crime occurs, it's easier for us to view. We've spent a lot of time and resources trying to view stuff that we can't. The appraisal for Bradley Cove is still ongoing. I think that was the rest of your questions.
Yeah. And Michael, the, there were cameras, and this is I found from a situation that I dealt with, but there were cameras that were put in, it was prior to you got here, and then they said the wiring, and I think that's from Millennium, but all those cameras around the city, any, are they working?
I'm not gonna tell you if any of them are working or not working for obvious reasons.
Well, this, this say, I mean, are we, do we have someone that's still out?
I'm extremely satisfied by the operation of the system. And what we've actually done was, our IT director has now been certified to handle any complaints, 'cause we were spending close to $40,000 a year in maintenance costs. He spent, we spent $1,500 to get him certified, so we've cut that cost down, and we've been able to do more cameras. I'm extremely happy, and the chief's there, I think he'll agree with me, with how the camera system has turned out within the city.
I'm the same. Do we have any more cost to bring them in and get them done?
We're gonna be proposing some, I think, at the next meeting, some additional.
These are new or?
New cameras.
Okay.
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Wait, I have to put this at two minutes.
Oh, 1604 Grand Avenue, Asbury Park. I, I didn't get everything about the scooters, but I will tell you my experience in Tennessee, Nashville, Tennessee. I, it was later in the evening, and I looked around, and they're all, they're laying all over the place like dead soldiers. I mean, just dropped, wherever it is. And I said to my son, I says, "What's going on with these scooters?" He says, "I said, 'Do they run out of juice, and they just leave them here, or what?'" So I says, "Well, this would be a good job for somebody to come along and collect them." I don't know how they work, whether you plug them in, whether you pay for them, I don't know, but that, I just happened to mention it. Anyway, last week was D-Day, and reflecting on a member of my family who was a World War II casualty, never to be found, had me a little emotional, to say the least. It was similar to 9/11. I have friends who have lost their loved ones in 9/11, and it doesn't seem to get any better. It's the same for them, and it's not easy, and it's not easy to forget. Okay, Friday is gonna be Flag Day, and you don't have to be a patriot to know what the flag means. It is "That blood shed for us, so that we could have freedom to be who we wanna be, where we wanna go, what, what we wanna do, and inside, of course, committing a crime." I think about what could have been if there was no D-Day, not a country like this. That flag in front of the municipal building is federally mandated, and I respectfully say it deserves the honor and respect to have its place of its own. To fly also with the POWs, need we not forget our gratitude for their sacrifices as a reminder of how lucky we are to live in this country of free America. As a taxpayer, I am also reminded where my tax dollars go to the city, to keep it running, paying salaries and other expenditures. So I am hopeful this request will be taken to heart. I would ask the council to rethink putting any flag on the same pole as the American flag. As I said, you don't have to be a patriot, just have a love for your country. Thank you.
Thank you.
Catherine Murphy?
Hold on one second. Louise, did you say as a past taxpayer?
Yes, I'm a.
Okay, I thought you said past. Oh, okay, I was like, how do you get to that? Teach me.
Okay. Trust me, I'm still telling.
I'm sorry, Catherine.
Catherine Murphy, Deer Lake Drive. First of all, I'd like to say that the paving on Deer Lake Drive has calmed traffic quite a bit, I've noticed. One of my questions is, it appears that one of the sides, I guess the southern side of Deer Lake Drive, has a bicycle lane where the northern side does not have a designated bicycle lane. There's a white line, but not a double white line, so I'm just wondering, I'm not clear what part of Deer Lake Drive is the city project, what part is the state-funded project, and when the painting will be finished, the turn lanes and the designated bicycle lanes. I'm hoping that it's sometime soon. I'd also like to thank the council and city manager for removing the fence across from Asbury Towers. I drove by there this afternoon. It looks 500% better without the chain-link fence up there. Thank you so much for your attention to that, and I'm hoping that in the next week or two before season, you know, goes into full tilt before 4th of July, that we can remove the other fences, the duplicate fencing, and sometimes triple fencing that is along Ocean Avenue all the way to Sixth Avenue. I was walking on the boardwalk this weekend, and I noticed coming in through the south side of Convention Hall how nice the facade is looking, you know, as opposed to the way it looked right after Sandy with all the cages holding everything together. Coming out on the north end, there's quite a bit, it's exactly the same. The ship is missing, some of the ornaments are missing, the cages are still there, and then Sunset Pavilion is still fenced in. So I'm wondering, you know, when Madison Marquette might be... So, I'm wondering, you know, when Madison Marquette might be remedying that situation at Sunset Pavilion? And also, is there a way or is there funding, maybe through a state grant or a national grant, that we can provide funding to some of these historic buildings, these monuments, so that we can maintain them? And that's it. Thank you so much.
The part of Deal Lake Drive being paved now from the bridge to Main Street is state and Mr. Manzella, we've been arguing with him as far as the striping also.
Yeah, so the striping that you see today is only temporary striping. At the last tag-up meeting with the project team, they said within the next, I think, two weeks, they would do the final striping. And that'll have the full bike lanes with the symbols and everything, so...
On both sides?
On both sides.
Okay.
And the fencing? And the remainder of the fencing?
The remainder of the fencing, we're looking into.
Okay.
Go. Go.
Okay. Marina Way, Eighth Avenue. To follow up on Louise, there is a flag ordinance about the municipal flag. No flag should fly under it from any other country or any other organization. So, I mean, we're hoping we're gonna solve this problem. And the problem on Main Street, I'm not even gonna ask you about because the last time it was a whole bunch of lies. No permit, no payment to the city employees that put it up, took it down, put it up, took it down four or five times. They never got paid. We never got paid. We still are in a hole for the $30,000 from the Me Too rally. They never paid. All those rallies we had against the poor guy that was trying to preach a sermon about God. I mean, it's really a sin that we have to, as taxpayers, think about the American flag, which means a lot to Louise and I and everybody else that's probably in our age group. We know what happened. We were here. And it's really pathetic that you put that flag of an organization with the American flag. You notice the PO flag is much smaller and there's a reason for that because no flag could be as big as the American flag, same size as the American flag, or larger than the American flag, and nothing can be on top of it. So, I mean, it's only flag etiquette that you abide by those rules. And last week was such an important week, everybody was flying the American flag, not us. Belma had it on every pole, not us. Every car dealership has the largest flag you ever saw. And that's a car dealership. We should be proud of our country and stand up for it, especially the flag. And Flag Day is Friday, I think, the 14th. The other thing I wanted to say, I wanted to know, did we ever collect money for the bicycles that are all over the city? We never get a report on any financial. I'd like to get a report on that. Are we making money with those bicycles or are they just cluttering up the street? And the other thing about the scooter, this is one square mile, remember that when you're thinking about a scooter. You and... People are always gonna break the rules. I have a huge truck right now on Eighth Avenue with Indiana license plates. No ticket, still there. It's a huge one. So, you always have to think about the people that are not gonna follow the rules. And with those scooters, they will never follow the rules. It's not a good thing to have them. How much money are you gonna make off of them? What are they gonna cause the police to work harder, telling them the violations that they're doing? No, you shouldn't have...
Thank you, Rita. That's your three minutes.
The three minutes go up?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Where is Cindy, by the way?
Cindy's outside.
Move to close.
You wanna answer?
Follow the paper.
All right. Wait a second.
Oh, I was just gonna bring up, I had to run out for a minute. I was gonna bring up, um, the Esberry Park Business Committee is doing a kind of get-together so the businesses in Esberry Park can start to, you know, get out of kind of our own silos. Um, and that is gonna take place on June 18, 2019, from 5 tonight at the Transportation Center. Business owner, workers, bartenders, cashiers, you know, everybody involved in a business in Esberry Park, ask you to come out. We're gonna have free drinks and some free food and get to know, you know, some of your business neighbors. And one of the reasons I was late and one of the reasons I love this council is because I was running out for the Pulse Memorial Benefit of the 49 victims that were shot and killed today. Today's the anniversary that the environment in Chatry and Ryan from the Tides do every year to not only remember those 49 people who were murdered, but the bartenders, the waitstaff, and all the people who were at the club who are irrevocably affected by that shooting and their families. So, on June 12th, we would like our thoughts and prayers to go out to any of the victims of the Pulse nightclub shooting.
Let me add one other thing also, and I should've done it before, I apologize. My thoughts and my prayers go out to the Buckley family. Dennis Buckley, former mayor, great person, passed away last week. Friday's the viewing and Saturday's the burial. So, but Dennis was an excellent person and just a great human being, so, thank you.
Moving on for minutes, I'd like to vote... Request for voting, um, block of executive minutes is May 22nd, Municipal Council Work Session is May 22nd, and the Municipal Council Regular Meeting of May 22nd. Can I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Move it.
Second.
Councilwoman Chapman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor John Moore?
Yes.
Moving on to the consent agenda, um, a motion to approve Resolution 2019, this is a special event application. May I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Are you going to do the entire consent agenda?
Yeah, if you want me to, or you want to do it? Just one more.
You read them all at once.
You want them all at once? Okay.
Go for it.
Resolution 2019-201 is the Public Health Nursing Services for a contract for January 1st through December 31st. Resolution 2019-202 is the credit sewer account for 1513 Park Avenue. Resolution 2019-203 is issuance of a duplicate tax sale certificate for 1022 Summerfield Avenue. Resolution 2019-204 is accepting a donation from the law enforcement against drugs for Bicycle for the Police Department. Resolution 2019-205 is the State of New Jersey's Chapter 159 for a budget appropriation for a U-Drive, U-Tax, U-Pay grant. Resolution 2019-206 is the annual service agreement for mobile data coverage, made of mobile data service coverage. Resolution 2019-207 is canceling balances of grant receivables and grants appropriated. 2019-208 is authorizing TNM associates to prepare a New Jersey Department of Transportation grant application. And 2019-228 is a resolution appointing the city manager clerk pro tempore. Is there any questions on consent agendas? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion, have a motion for approving of consent agenda items.
Move it.
Second.
Councilwoman Chapman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Council... Mayor John Moore?
No.
Moving on to individual resolutions, um, a motion to approve Resolution 2019-209 is the payment of bills. Councilwoman Chapman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor John Moore?
No. No. Yeah, we didn't have a motion.
We'll do the motion. My fault. We'll do it again. Uh, moving on to Resolution 209, the payment of bills, a motion to...
Move it.
To adopt?
Second.
More, and we'll go with Clayton. Councilwoman Chapman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor John Moore?
No.
Make a motion, I may have a motion for Resolution 2019-210, approving the fees, waiving of fees as per the abandoned and vacant property code? Is there a motion?
Second.
We're just not used to you doing it, Michael.
You're welcome. And there's also a bright light in my face.
Okay.
That Kelso can't help. Councilwoman Chapman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor John Moore?
Yes.
May I have a motion for Resolution approved in 2019-220, which is the liquor license renewals, removing license number 1303-33017-12?
Move it.
Second.
Councilwoman Chapman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor John Moore?
Yes.
Resolution approving liquor license for Porta, this is Resolution 2019-12. There needs to be amendment to this resolution. It's going to be number 18 and the language shall read, "Upon receipt of a credible and legitimate noise complaint that has been investigated by the shift commander within the police department, licensee shall close the open exterior doors upon request of the shift commander." I have a motion to amend this resolution.
Actually, it can be moved forward with the amendment.
Okay. May...
Move it as amended.
Okay.
Move it as amended.
Second.
Councilwoman Chapman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
No.
Mayor Moore?
Yes. Question. Going back to 219-211, did we just withdraw that one or did we withdraw and vote yes on everything else?
You voted yes on everything else?
Okay.
And you...
Withdrawed.
Okay, good, okay.
The one license which has to do with the Asbury Hell House in the Steinbach Building?
Thank you.
That will be considered at the next council meeting separately.
Correct. Thank you.
May I have a motion for Resolution 2019-214, which is a resolution approving a liquor license with special conditions for Bond Street Bar and Grill LLC doing business as Bond Street Bar and Grill, Capital Line and Latora for the 2019-220...
You missed one. You missed 213.
Yeah, you gotta go back to 213.
May I have a motion for Resolution 2019-213, it's approving a liquor license with special conditions for DB Ventures LLC doing business as Johnny Mac for the 2019-2020 licensing year. May I have a motion?
Move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Chapman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
May I have a motion for Resolution 2019-214, it's approving a liquor license with special conditions for Bond Street Bar and Grill LLC doing business as Bond Street Bar and Grill, Capital Line and Latora for the 2019-2020 licensing year. May I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilwoman Chapman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
May I have a motion for Resolution 2019-215, it's a resolution approving the renewal of hotel liquor license number 1303-36-069-001, which is held at 210 Fifth Avenue, Venture Urban Renewal LLC doing business at the Asbury Hotel for the 2019-2020 license term. May I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilwoman Chapman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
May I have a motion for Resolution 2019-216, it's authorizing the purchase of a new fire truck for the fire department?
Move it. Second.
Chapman? Councilwoman Chapman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kendall?
Stay.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
May I have a motion for Resolution 2019-217, it's a resolution authorizing the purchase of various IT equipment. May I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilwoman Chapman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
May I have a motion for Resolution 2019-218, it's the purchase of three police cars. May I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilwoman Chapman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
May I have a motion for Resolution 2019-219, it's authorizing the purchase of an ATV for the Beach Department. May I have a motion?
This is menu money, right?
It is. Yes, it's sort of menu money.
Second.
Councilwoman Chapman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
May I have a motion on Resolution 2019-220, it's a resolution authorizing the City of Asbury Park to enter into a contract for the purchase of certain real property located at 929 Asbury Avenue, Block 403, Lot 11, for the location of a new firehouse and associated facilities. May I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilwoman Chapman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
May I have a motion for Resolution 2019-221, it's a resolution authorizing the City of Asbury Park to grant a revocable license for approachment over certain properties of the right-of-way area adjacent to Sylvan Avenue and the property located at 2,008-1012 Springwood Avenue, Block 702, Lot 201, and to execute a license agreement associated Avenue, Block 702, Lot 201, and to execute a license agreement associated therewith. May I have a motion?
Move it. Second.
Councilwoman Chapman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Councilman Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
May I have a motion for Resolution 2019-222, it's an award of a micro mobility program for the City of Asbury Park. May I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilwoman Chapman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Councilman Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
May I have a motion for Resolution 2019-223, it's a bid for the transportation of liquid sewage sludge from the Asbury Park Waste Water Treatment Plant to the Pacific Valley Sewage Commission. May I have a motion?
Move it. Second.
Councilwoman Chapman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Councilman Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
May I have a motion for Resolution 2019-224, which is awarding a contract to Millennium Communications Group for various projects around City Hall. May I have a motion?
Move it.
Move it.
Councilwoman Chapman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Councilman Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
May I have a motion for Resolution 2019-225, it's a resolution approving change order number four, which is zero, zero change for bridge and Hex Street improvements. May I have a motion?
Move it. Second.
Councilwoman Chapman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Councilman Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
May I have a motion for Resolution 2019-226, rejecting bids for the Opticon or equivalent GPS preemption and activated traffic systems. May I have a motion?
Move it. Second.
Councilwoman Chapman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Councilman Kendall?
Excuse me. Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
May I have a motion for Resolution 2019-227, it's a resolution of the mayor and council of the City of Asbury Park, authorizing the person-to-person and place-to-place transfer of linearity retail consumption license number 1303-33-008-010, from Asbury One Liquors LLC to 1101 Ocean Avenue Venture. May I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilwoman Chapman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Councilman Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
No.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Moving on to ordinances, may I have a motion to introduce ordinance number 2019-222. This is going to be tabled. May I have a motion to table this?
I move to table.
Move it.
Second.
There's a motion to table. Councilwoman Chapman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Councilman Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Tabled. May I have a motion to introduce ordinance 2019-24, it's an ordinance amending Chapter 5 Beach Boardwalk and Beachfront regulation policy of the Code of the City of Asbury Park, New Jersey.
Move it.
Second.
Councilwoman Chapman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Councilman Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
The public hearing for this ordinance will be July 10th. May I have a motion to introduce ordinance 2019-25, it's an ordinance authorizing the City of Asbury Park to acquire the real property located at 929 Asbury Avenue, Asbury Park, New Jersey, Block 403, Lot 11, for the location of a new firehouse and associated facility. May I have a motion?
Move it. Okay.
Councilwoman Chapman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Councilman Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
The public hearing for this ordinance will be June 26th. Moving on to, for second reading, public hearing, may I have a motion to open for public comment, 2019-23, it's an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 10, I'm sorry, Chapter 20, entitled Environmental Regulations, in order to add a new section 20-3 thereof, we know as "Plastic Bags" of the Code of the City of Asbury Park, with the amendments, the minimus amendments of, as previously described by the city attorney, which you'll put on the record.
Yeah, because the ordinance has already been introduced, we do have to take a vote to amend the ordinance before we open it up for public hearing. And as I indicated earlier during the work session, the minor amendment is to add an additional type of plastic bag that will be considered exempt and not prohibited under the ordinance, which is currently under consideration. The type of plastic bag that will be exempt is small, clear plastic bags of less than four inches in depth that are commonly provided to customers by hardware stores to hold screws and bolts and other small items. And that would go into the definitional section under the definition for exempt bag as letter number G. So we need a motion to amend the ordinance to include that.
I move it.
Second.
Councilwoman Chapman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Councilman Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Now we can open up to public hearing.
Do I have to do the motion for public hearing?
Yes.
Can I have a motion to open for public hearing?
Move it.
Second.
Councilwoman Chapman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Councilman Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Is now open for public...
Would anyone like to be heard on the plastic bag banning ordinance?
Arthur, this is what...
Yeah. Right. Arthur, plus back to Summerfield Avenue. Being a hospitality business for over 40 years, we use bags to, you know, take out stuff like that. And being an environmentalist for 50 years, and scuba diver for 35 years, very anti-plastic anything. And my sister is also. I don't think your bill does enough. In my restaurant in New York City, I had white paper bags with handles, 10,000 of them. Done them on the 9th of September, 2001. And on the 12th, they were, I mean, 11th, they were covered with that soot, and they had to throw them out.[1406.13]